We go. Okay, we are going to begin the regular council meeting, city of Twinsburg, Twinsburg Government Center, 7:45 PM. Shannon, please call the roll.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Here.
Mr. Steele?
Here.
Mr. Fury?
Here.
Ms. McFerrin?
Here.
Mr. Bellin?
Here.
Mr. Scafidi?
Here.
Mr. Barr?
Here.
Please rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance led by Mr. Fury.
Oh God, from whom all power comes, by those divine we must abide, we must thank you for our civil liberties and our freedoms, for all opportunities and our privileges. We beg of you to bless, assist, and enlighten this council and representatives in the city of Twinsburg. May we prove worthy of the confidence placed in us by our fellow citizens. May we be just and upright in their thinking, honest in all their actions, and ever guided by true conscience in the legislation we propose to vote upon. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of the minutes from May 22nd and June 5th. Any changes? Okay, minutes will stand as written. We have no awards or presentations tonight. Any audience participation?
Yes, first we have Karen Clinton.
Good evening, council. Mayor's accent, Mr. Maestros. How are you?
Good, how are you?
I just have a couple things to go through here. I wanted to talk about the transit pipe.
Yes, please.
Karen Clinton, Glenwood Drive. I wanted to go over the transit pipe situation. I wanted to thank you, Sam, Scafidi, Councilor, I understand that overlord is underway this year. But we spoke to him, there are streets left.
We do.
So I was just trying to kind of get everybody on the same page to get updated as to when they're gonna get rid of all the asbestos pipe, so that we can reassure everybody in the acres of clean drinking water and water bathed in. I don't know if that's been tested recently, but it was a problem and also, I'm under the impression that there's a large section on Glenwood Drive, too. I think, and I'm gonna declare that up with Amy, maybe she knows. Somebody said it was a six inch pipe and then somebody said it was a 10 inch pipe, so that's like new news to me. So, if we could go over that, that's number one. Number two, ordinance 73-2008, sewer and wastewater bill, if they want to raise the fees. We were reassured years ago that if we built our own wastewater treatment plant and raised our taxes, you know, everybody, they forget, they could come and ask for money, money, money. So, we agreed to that. And we were reassured that because we were taking care of our own wastewater, that it wouldn't be an issue for us. We were also reassured when we were told we had plenty of capacity, that that would never be an issue when we had questions about Remindville tapping into our wastewater treatment plant. Wouldn't be an issue, bills wouldn't be raised. So now here we are, and we want more money. This is a problem for the same seniors that live in the Glenwood area that don't have clean drinking water, but you want to charge them more to flush it down the toilets, ridiculous. These are the same people that are elderly population and the newer generations that are living in this affordable housing. One specific person that I spoke with, active citizens of Twinsburg, said, "I got a $6 a month raise for social security." Our school system just passed a levy that's costing me $50 now each month. So, I mean, you did math, $6 for $50, you know? How much is she short? And you want to charge her another $17? Because people can't afford it. They don't work, they're retired. They can't just go out and get another job or pick up a shift of overtime, if there is any overtime available, or, you know, come and get a cush city job, or they can pick up an extra 10 grand a year. And it's, and so I just feel like you're not thinking about them. And there's a lot of people that need to be thought about. Not everybody lives in the more affluent part of Twinsburg. There's still a large portion of Twinsburg that just can't afford this. So, I want you to keep that in mind and give that some serious thought when you're weighing this, when you want to pass this ordinance. Now, moving on to ordinance 74-2018, the quarter percent issue. We've been there, did that. We needed it for police and fire, the community desperately needed it. We came and the community rallied and said, "Great, we're gonna do this." They campaigned for it, so they would pass it. Because we needed it for the community as far as the health, safety, and welfare of the constituents. That's your job. And I'm not being rude, I'm not being nasty. Sometimes I think you guys forget that. That's your job, not hosh golf courses. The health, safety, and welfare of the constituents, let's start there. And when we have money left short, by all means, I'm the first one that says, "Sign me up for a nice hosh golf course." If we don't have the money, you know, we need to make hard decisions. So, I just don't feel it's fair, and neither does the active citizens of Twinsburg, that this cost be passed on to them. And essentially, that's what's happening. Lastly, I want to talk about the creek, Tinkers Creek. I was, and maybe Chris can help with this. I called in February, we had all that, the melt, the rain, and we had a lot of debris in Tinkers Creek. I mean, trees, there's massive trees, they're all on the sides. And every year, they send out some of the city workers in boats to look to see how bad it is and the form of cleaning, and whether or not they're gonna use chainsaws to kind of chop it up so it moves along. I'm not sure if that was done this year, and they have the Tinker watershed folks coming in to pick up bags and stuff, that they want to clean up the creek. I think it's gonna be a dangerous situation to put them in. So, I don't know, that's not a good idea, nor do I think we should depend on them. I think we should be getting that job done. So, I don't mean to sound like the bear of bad news, I don't mean to sound like I'm, you know, trying to poke the bear, I just think that there are some things that needed to be brought to your attention that maybe you're just not paying attention to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other audience participation?
There is, I think there is, yes. Chuck, is it Kenyamer? Chuck? Sheila Williams?
Hello, I'm gonna make my quick, because I have all the city workers behind me, both looking at me. 21, I think it's on its final invoke to see, I'm only gonna ask that the guilty young, the tobacco, and the vapors say, notorious to the young people. I know there's been conversation, I've had conversation about, you can go to 18, the 95 cigarettes and things like that. My concern is the fruit of flavors, the cherry flavors, and these kids are able to camouflage it. And, you know, Cory's gonna be doing outreach, and he didn't say that when he was here, but if we pass it tonight, I think there's about six months of community engagement and education school system and the vendors, so that they better understand it. So I'm just asking that, that all of that play a role in this. It's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Chuck, Cameron? No, that's okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Chuck Cameron, 2613 Burridge Circle. Been heading Twinsburg about a year and a half, love it down here. Just have a question, something was brought up earlier. The ordinance 73-118, on the sewer effect, the sewer increase. Just curious, I'm sure the newspaper, Mayor Van Houtt reported, had, like, they said, "Well, we haven't had an increase, or we've got low rates to some count." And here's why the need for the increase, how much money it can raise, and what's the need for it. Just, you know, just curiosity. Because people may place, if a lot of our sewer combined on the sewer, they're set to pay, uh, why, please, not, uh, history. I'm just perceiving.
This is the first you will, may or may not answer your question after all the people are done speaking.
Oh, is the last one? That's the last one? Anybody want to? That's okay.
Chris can, if you want to do it.
Yep. Chris, would you like to respond?
Sarah may have that. Yes, Sarah might have that.
I've got some numbers in front of me, too, Chris, if you'd like me to jump in. Just for conversation's sake, this was presented to the finance committee meeting. Twinsburg residents typically pay $45.50 a quarter, which is 182 annual dues. The average Summit County taxpayer pays $838.87 annually. So, we are the lowest, like, fourfold. Akron typical payer is 1371. Kaoga Falls pays Akron rates to the tune of roughly $700. Stowe, Monroe Falls are all $905, and that's Summit County DOES, which is who I believe we would be using if we didn't have our own facility. Possibly. Okay. The understanding that this commission, or the finance committee, was presented to council, was that we had not seen a rate increase since 2008. We have equipment that's aging and facilities that just need some upkeep, and I'll let Mr. Campbell.
I would also say that there's a significant portion of that bill that goes into a capital improvement fund for wastewater programs. So when we do a road, a complete road construction, a portion of that, we need to do stores and store stores, and that's part of the money that supports that, as well as raise, the employee cost goes up 2% to 3% a year, and we haven't had an increase in 10 years.
Samuel? If you do want to answer? Did we answer all your questions, or?
No, just, it doesn't have a lot of money, but comparing to other cities, I can in Twinsburg be doing a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
When we say that everybody else is paying more, you guys done a wonderful job here, handling capital improvements, I understand that. Just 37% increase is like a lot, you have people on fixed incomes, but, just, you know, I'm just curious.
The state averages roughly $661 a year, so even that were?
Sewer only, or for sewer?
Just sewer. So. Yeah.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, we have.
One other thing, Mrs. Clinton?
Yeah.
In all the time I've been here, I've seen maybe 10 different water tests. We've never had a test of anything in the acres that said that our water was not perfectly safe to drink or use in any area. We get our water from Cleveland, and by the time it gets to Twinsburg, it goes through wood pipes, it goes through, no, it's not a debate. We go through wood pipes, we go through transit pipes, we go through all kinds of pipes to get here. We're doing our best to replace those, but there is no sit health risk that we are aware of. We've looked at this in depth for years. And we are replacing transit pipes, but there is no asbestos poisoning or effects that we are aware of. And our water gets tested all the time, and we are not, there is nothing unsafe about the water in the city of Twinsburg. Thank you.
And Mr. Fury, I will address it, but you didn't address the, Mrs. Clinton, and I'm gonna tell you.
You're out of order, ma'am.
That's absolutely not true, and there's documented, or whatever you're saying.
We are, no, well, we are gonna move on to council communication and committee reports. Mr. Fury?
Mr. Fury? Thank you, good evening. The CIC will meet next Tuesday, June 19th, in the jury room at 5:30. The Community Relations Board will meet June 21st at 5:00 PM at the Twinsburg Public Library. I had attached to attend the Taste of Twinsburg with several other council members this weekend. I thought it was really well done, high-end crafts, fantastic food, and I hope to continue to do that program. Lastly, the Brian Donato and the Police, Twinsburg Police Association do an annual fundraiser for the Josh McCarren Scholarship Fund. This year, the golf outing is on July 6th at Glen Eagles. Cost is $100 per player. You can call, tag Brian Donato at 216-224-4308, or at B. Donato at twinsburg.ohio.us to register for the event. Usually fills up, and it's a good time. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Steele?
They are being met on the 7th. They had six different cases. Some of the, two or three of them were changes to housing. The major thing was, they approved the demolition of a house at 9771 Shepherd Road and issued the certificate of appropriateness. And they also approved a 276,000 square foot new warehouse that is going in at Cornerstone. It is a spec building, so, and if you want to know where it's going, if you go past FedEx, past Amazon, it's behind there. Okay? There is one, one last large area at Cornerstone that's left, which is parallel to Chamberlain Road and towards the south end. And that's, I was told that's where, is that where O'Reilly's going? And then we still have the northwest corner, right at the, okay. The house up on Shepherd Road, the one that they approved for demolition, it is set way back off the road, it is right up by Shepherd Trail. You can't, you can hardly see this, this house from Shepherd Road. The owner wanted to take it down, he said it would cost too much to go into it, and I don't think it's, it's not an older, older house, it's just the people that were there didn't take care of it, and I think it's been vacant for probably five or six years, I believe. And that was it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Scafidi?
Thank you, good evening. The Board of Zoning Appeals met on May 23rd. Before them, they had one appeal, number 6, 2018. That was a Glenwood Drive resident proposing a roof over an existing deck. Specifically, he is asking for a 12-foot, 6-inch rear setback variance. After reviewing this through the committee, they voted 5-0 to award this variance. So at this time, I would like to make a motion to waive the 30-day waiting period for this resident. Is there a second? Mr. Fury, second? Any discussion? And then call the roll, please.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Ms. McFerrin?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Bellin?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The next Board of Zoning Appeals meeting will be tomorrow evening here in council chambers at 6:30. The next finance committee meeting will be on June 26th at 6 o'clock, and that's before the council meeting, and again, it'll be right here in the council chambers. I just want to say, the David Post tonight presented the charter amendments that the Charter Review Commission went over or recommended, and I sat in on all of those meetings. I just wanted to thank that group of residents, they did a really good job, they finished it in a timely fashion, they were very professional, and they went through each and every section of the charter, and I think that they made some really good decisions, it was really good discussion. And so again, I thank those folks for what they did, and I appreciate their hard work. Other than that, that's, I, too, was also at the Taste of Twinsburg, along with Mr. Fury and some other council members up here. And it was a great event, and me, too, I hope that we do continue that again next year. I hope that we don't have another year without it. It was a very nice event. Other than that, that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Planning Commission met on June 4th, and they did approve a preliminary site plan for a Mexican restaurant that will be going in next to Bob Evans, but that was just a preliminary plan. They have, their next meeting is June 18th, but on June 13th, City Architecture and Connecting Community, they're gonna present to the Board of Education and the Planning Commission. So that's tomorrow. No, not tomorrow, yeah, tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
And that's all met for me. Ms. McFerrin?
Good evening. I did attend the Taste of Twinsburg as well, and we were fortunate to have the weather hold off, and it was a great event. And again, hope that we continue with that. Mr. Fury already mentioned about the Community Relations Meeting on 6/21, and Finance on 6/26, and the CIC on June 19th. The Parks and Rec will meet on 6/28. The Friends of Twinsburg Parks will meet on June 18th at rush hour. And I did want to say that I had the honor and opportunity to go to the Northeast Ohio Local Leadership Conference in DC. On June 7th, we were actually at the White House and met 27 different departments from the Office of Intergovernmental Affairs. And then on the 8th, we met with four of the local congressmen, and then we had the opportunity to meet with the House Democratic Whip, the Administrator for Small Business Administration, the Minority Leader of the House of Representatives, which is Nancy Pelosi, the Majority Leader from the House of Representatives, Kevin McCarthy, the Vice President of Global Innovations for Amazon spoke to us. I mean, it was a powerful morning and just a great opportunity, and hopefully, more of us will be able to go together next year. But we were there with other city councilor peoples and mayors from our local area, from Bay Village down to Monroe Falls and Cargill Falls, so it was a great opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bellin?
Good evening. I also attended this evening's public hearing on the two ordinances. Wanted to second Mr. Scafidi's thanks to not only Mr. Post, but the rest of the Charter Review Commission. They did a great job, I know that's not, not an easy job. The next Golf Advisory Board meeting will be on Tuesday, July 17th, right here in council chambers. And since our last meeting, I also attended the Memorial Day Parade here in Twinsburg. Not only the parade itself, but then the program afterwards. The weather was beautiful, it was a great event, and I look forward to it every year. That's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Barr?
Thank you, good evening. Environmental Commission's on a bit of a summer break. Our next meeting is not until Tuesday, September 4th. It'll be here in council chambers at 7:00 PM. My colleagues have already mentioned CIC this coming Tuesday, the 19th. Finance Committee will be immediately before our next council meeting on the 26th. Taste of Twinsburg, shout out to Parks and Rec, they did fabulous job, and the Wild Roots Market folks, was a really a great event, and young and old, everybody looked like they were having a great time, so. I know my kids ran me around till I couldn't see straight, but it was a lot of fun, we had a good time. As Mr. Bellin stated, the Memorial Day Parade, always, always nice, the program in the square was just terrific. And that's, that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, there's no mayor for the mayor's report. So, we move to department heads? Is anybody speaking? No.
Good evening, everybody. Civil Service met on April 19th and also on May 17th. At the April 19th meeting, they approved sergeant's promotion exam and fellow vacancy in the, in the role of sergeant in the police department. So the exam was posted on April 25th, and 12 patrol officers signed up to take that test, which is scheduled for June 28th. At the May 17th meeting of the Civil Service Commission, they approved our proposed amendments to the changes to the civil service rules and regulations. There was a public hearing, and then following the public hearing, the Commission approved all the changes. So, that's it for civil service. IT-wise, try to kind of make it a little bit more, because I get this, I get these IT reports from the IT guys, Mark and Zach, and I said I gotta kind of smooth it over, so, so that there's not so many abbreviations. The wiring was completed for a new server rack at Fire Station 2, and then a new router is gonna be installed there also on Wednesday, so that'll complete the network upgrade at Station 2. The Fire Department MDT's have all been installed, and the MapPoint program will be installed next week for dispatch, so they'll be able to follow the fires trucks that have the MDT's in them, just kind of the way they do with the police cars, that you can see where they're at. The Berg, in the outdoor Berg at the water park, have been switched over to use the new Peak Point of Sale system, so that now the whole Parks and Recreation Department is using the same point of sale system. Be excited, huh? HR-wise, ads have been posted and will soon begin the interviews for the part-time chefs at the Aaron &amp; Moses Restaurant. The frontals upgrade is underway. They've been able to remote into our server and export, export the pay codes and things like that from the current system, so that we can put them right into the new system without having to do a whole lot of paperwork on that. So hopefully, that's going pretty smoothly here and getting done quickly. We also need to schedule some training then to get that workforce ready, the new web-based chrono system that we got coming in. And then we met with Aflac, too, it was pretty interesting. A lot of our employees have Aflac, and because it's not really a city, it's not so much city-sponsored, those are individual plans that the employees pay for themselves. She kind of went over some interesting things about the, some of the plans, that the employees are taking full advantage of some of the, some of the benefits that are available to them. Like, for instance, there's, there's a wellness benefit with that program, that if they just go to the doctors like once a year, or something like that, they get $25 back and stuff like that. And little things like that that she pointed out to us, that they're not taking advantage of. So, we're gonna have her come in and sit down a couple afternoons and just invite everybody in that is currently on an Aflac plan, so she can kind of explain some of the enhancements to the programs. And some people signed up like years ago when they first started working here, and they don't know, they have Aflac or something, they don't really know necessarily what's all, but they've got some great benefits now. We do have a new police officer that started on 6/11, Vinnie Caparucchio. I agree. There'll be a formal swearing-in with him and another officer later, later in the year, but for now, he didn't, at least, start work.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Chris?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Well, I will start by letting you know that we did have a crew in Tinkers Creek today. They got down in a canoe, getting, getting the obstructions out of the creek that they can, they took chainsaws and, I'm gonna hand you up. We have to be fairly cautious when we're in Tinkers Creek, there's a lot of regulations governing the movement in and around Tinkers Creek, so we try to disturb the least amount of that area as possible. So they started today, they'll go through, we do that every year, not necessarily the same time of the year, you know, if the creek is running high, we don't put the, you know, put crews in there, but try to keep the obstructions to a minimum. In the past, we've had contractors help us with that, it's large trees and things like that, but like I said, we've got to be careful when we're in that area. So, that work will continue for a few days. As far as road maintenance goes, we were down to 11 potholes patched in May, which is good. Along with that, we started our crack sealing program. We began on State Route 82 from Square to Macedonia. We're moving to Post Road, and that will probably complete our spring round of that up there. As it's getting much warmer out, the exits of the county this week, that, we have to cease that work that's, you know, it's, you know, it's tiring, basically. So, we'll pick that up in the fall, and we have a certain amount of product that we purchase every year, so we'll finish that off in the fall. Along with that, we're actually still street sweeping, we're trying to finish that program. The first round through is, is a lot, we get a lot of debris, it takes a long time to get through there. So we're working on that. Along with, with that, ranch chipping, we began on, May round on May 7th, and we had 770 stops, it was really big. I think that was the first opportunity for people to bring stuff out of their backyard. I think that was the first opportunity for people to bring stuff out of their backyard. So we had 770 stops in May, 349 cubic yards of material collected. June went much quicker, 405 stops. So we're getting it cleaned up, we're getting there. The next round will begin on July 2nd. It's always the first Monday of the month, so July 2nd is the first Monday. And as we had promised, we went through and did a leaf pickup, which we don't normally do, but because of the storm, we did that. And not as many stops as I thought. We did that on May 14th and 15th, 73 stops. So not too bad, but it gave, you know, people the opportunity to get their yards cleaned up after that storm. Coming up, sidewalk leveling will begin in July, probably, we're hoping the first week. And hydrant painting, we've gone through the city, all the hydrants are painted. Now we're going back for the ones that were replaced, ones that were repaired. And what we're going to do, we'll go into an area and do the ones that were replaced, for instance. We will also, if there's not too many others that we've already painted green, we're going to paint those red. So ultimately, the whole city will be red, and we'll just do it section by section, so we're going to be starting that. Wanted to let you know that the microturbine at the wastewater plant is back up and running. They had a big project. The biggest problem we've had with that unit since it started was the compressor. Probably maybe a little bit of a misapplication for that unit. So the microturbine itself runs very, very well, it's a great piece of equipment, but this one support piece, we were replacing that supply. So I think we've got a better designed unit, and it's gone in, and we're producing electricity like crazy, so that is going well. And lastly, I wanted to let you know, we've been working over by the fuel tanks. You know, a couple years ago, we had the fuel tanks removed from right over here by the police and fire. Prior to that work, we had found that, in some of our work, we found benzene in the underground, which is a result of spills of gasoline over the years. So we were chasing that down with Phoenix Environmental, it's an environmental facility. When we took those tanks out, we thought that with all that work, it would eliminate that problem, but it didn't. So we've had to go further with the investigation work, which Phoenix Mutual is doing. We're okay with the ground, with the soils. We're a little bit high on the groundwater concentration of the benzene. So Buster Bureau of Underground Storage Tanks wants that, you know, they want us to either clean it up, which is a huge project, or they want us to be able to identify the fact that it is manageable at this point. We think it is manageable. Phoenix is in there, they're going to do a little more sampling and analysis on some things, and they're going to present a plan to Buster, so that we don't have to go any further. So this is work that we hadn't planned on. Right now, we're looking at anywhere from $11,000 to $26,000. So I'll probably come back to council, maybe involve and ask for that money, but we really need to get started now with some of that work. So wanted to make you aware of that. Hopefully, by the time we're done with this, call it tier, we're in a tier of one right now, get everything completed, then we'll be done.
Thank you.
Chris?
Is the groundwater back there, is the, how are we, where are we sampling, or how are they?
They actually sunk four wells, so they...
Down through the concrete, or?
Yeah. Yeah, they actually drill wells, then they take the samples out of there. What they think is, at first, when they first started sampling, when they were bringing that water, it may have contaminated the sides of those well cases. So they want to go in there and they want steam cleaned everything and make sure everything is clean, so that the sample they get is a bio sample. And that could prove to be the only problem we've got right now.
Okay. And there's no chance it's migrating towards the creek?
No.
Okay. And the last question is, did you get the hydrants on rolling hills?
Yes.
Thank you.
Chris, I have a question. I know Amy's doing Ravenna Road from Richener to Idlewood, okay, this year, that's going to be done. But from Idlewood then up to Bell Meadow, where we stopped last year coming from Oakwood, is there any plans for the Service Department to maybe do some patching repair there? I know we're going to be applying for funding there to try to finish that road eventually, but in the meantime, you know, I'm getting some concerns about, you know, all the rattling on it. There's really no holes, major holes, but there's a lot of rattling of the cars when you're driving on it, so.
So maybe a little bit of milling?
Yeah, maybe a little milling and just filling it in, like I think we did it up on 91 at one point. But yeah, if there was any plan for that, or if it could be worked in the schedule, that'd be great. And then the last thing is, there's a guardrail on Ravenna Road just by Bell Meadow between Shepherd, between, actually, yeah, Shepherd Road. And I talked to Kenny months ago, and I know that the materials were ordered and I believe they were in, but there was a problem with the contractor putting those. There was a few of them that we were waiting to have installed.
Yeah.
Do you know where that is by any chance?
That is actually work that's going to be done by a contractor.
Okay.
It's a local contractor. So yeah, I do have that, Bryce, and we're going to do that.
Okay. All right. Good, thank you. Thanks.
I had two things. So I noticed the crews are out, they're not just like leveling the sidewalks, they're actually installing or replacing some sections of sidewalks.
Some you have to, for instance, if there's a tree right across there, sometimes they have to take the section out, cut the roots, and actually, it's easier just to pour the sidewalk. So if we can level, that's the quickest and the cheapest, but when conditions dictate them, we'll...
Isn't it true, I mean, I think it's great, and you guys are doing a great job, and we really appreciate it, but I don't think a lot of residents know that that's not something a lot of our neighboring cities take care of for the residents.
Right. Yeah, it's fairly new for us. I think we're only maybe three years into it.
Yeah, but I really appreciate that. And I noticed some fire hydrants are really low, and then some seem to be like really high. Why is that? Is this just...
Strictly, Amy can answer that more, but that's Cleveland Water elevation of the ground there. I don't know if they put it in and the elevation changes for some reason, maybe they get it along the line and get it.
You guys do a great job. Thank you for all the services.
Yes, thank you very much.
And keeping a budget.
Chris, I got one more for you. It's easy. Don't put your pedal away yet. Westbound 82, the sign at Dutton specifically, and I think Canyon Falls Boulevard, the Scotch Light reflective is no longer Scotch Light reflective, they're very difficult to read at night. If anybody is cruising through there, could just take a look. I don't think it's anything pressing, it's just something I've noticed I go that way from time to time.
Absolutely.
That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Good evening.
Good evening.
You got me this week. Total calls from month of May was 241, just 1214 for the year, 5% increase, but there's a 25% increase and 12% respectively in fire EMS. So the decrease is to fires, we had three working fires last month already. No major damage, I think the highest one was about $27,000. You guys got a good stop on it. Among the normal events, we had three overdose and intoxication events, which is way down from over the years, so it's good news for us. The sirens, the whole system is working and operational, SERC does go man those stations along with our staff to try to get people, keep in the stations or in their cars on patrol. All but Bavaria are operational. Bavaria, the parts came in as a township site, so with these things, there's a lot of moving parts, a lot of batteries and things that go around and ordering, and make a lot of effort to keep the maintenance up on it, so hopefully by July's test, that site's up and running. Hydrants, they have 600 done of the 1900. Hopefully, we can get them towards the end of July, maybe beginning of August. Depends on calls, they do it on shift, so if it's a heavy training day, call day, if it's pouring rain, we don't want to hold the roads obviously during those. And we do push out to the residents and motorists to watch our guys out there, guys and gals. Story 429, the ladder on Station 2 is down at service for about eight weeks. The generator hasn't been worked on for a while, so we're looking at replacing it or repairing it. They don't know until they get into the guts of it, and they have to ship it off. And they're also looking at moving it from the underside of the car to the top of the truck, with the salt on the roads. We already did it to 19 a few years ago, so we'll know in a few weeks, and with SERC probably due diligence on that. Prevention, along with myself and Chief Morgan, we put in a real big effort on this. We have time, we go behind all the plazas, you know, just to check access, just how clean they are, and they're doing very well. But the only thing that, and Tim and I are going to talk about this when we get back, it's the dumpsters, there's so many different companies, and they put them there for their convenience, not the shopkeepers, not the farm department certainly. It's for the convenience of the guys who doesn't have to, you know, they used to be on wheels, you know, they used to get out of the truck and roll it maybe and get it to the forks. We really want to push and get with these landlords to say, it's on our, they should be dealing with where we decide where to put it. You, Planning Commission and everybody else, Building Department makes them put gates and stuff off, and when they're building a building, a new building, say where the dumpster goes. Well, most of the time, the dumpster is not in this little house, it's outside, and it's convenient for the operator. Same here with City Hall, you get the same thing, the guy comes in, 6:00 in the morning, beats the heck out of him with the truck and leaves. He doesn't really care. There's trees, he gets mangled, it's just a bad place, and I think we need to, we're doing our inspection of these places, and they're doing really well. I attended the Taste of Twinsburg event as well, and half working, half attending, and it was very involved, and it made me think, Derek and I had a conversation, and I just want to thank Derek personally, Kenny from Service, and Tom Mason from the Police Department, and Angel for throwing in. There's never an event planned for everything that we do. I don't know if you realize that or not. And it depends on the venues, Rocket Park, there's an event planned for everything at Rocket Park, whether it's a concert, or maybe a rock concert. Rocket Park differ from the fireworks ones, it's a different, you know, population at times. But Kenny, Tom, and Derek give me emails from me all the time, and it's regarding who is in charge, what's their name, and it all goes into this plan. It's a, if you haven't seen it, I'll email you a copy of it. We have a basic plan, a full plan, the basic plan everybody gets, that's got a dog in the hunt, so to speak. It's about 12 pages. The big plan is about 40, and it includes pre-fill and city command forms if something bad happens. So if you don't know me by now, we plan for everything, whether it's man-made natural whatever, but there's always an answer, and there's food poisoning, tornadoes, we have an answer for it, and it's because we should be. So I just wanted to thank them for their, you know, it used to be, when I started it four years ago, like, what's the empty now kind of a thing, but now, when you give some leather rolling in, I've heard it more than once already from some department heads, oh, we opened the plan up, and there it was, there's our plan. So that was great to hear, and Derek and I had a great conversation, and he basically memorized it. Anybody that knows the plan besides me for that event, it's Derek, can you sign it up? There's always a copy of it. He had, he brought AED up to the square with him. I didn't ask him to. It's just, he's got that mindset, so hopefully, everybody follows his suit and just sort of takes those plans seriously. Last thing, Chris, we love the red hydrants.
Love them, love them.
And after we get compliments from all the firefighters coming through, they go, things are nice, and they are, because people don't realize how much paint goes on those hydrants over the years, and for us to have our own Service Department come in and maintain those, you can see the stamp on them. You used to not be able to read the writing on a hydrant because there's so much paint on it, but now, and we can spot them. So the green when we started off was a good thought, but not when you're trying to find them, you know, in a rush. But the red, I'm a purist, I'm a fire guy, I love red. That's all we have. Any questions for me?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other department heads? Okay. We'll move on to legislation. First, we have Ordinance 60, 2018.
An ordinance amending that 2018 Annual Appropriation Ordinance, providing for the ordinary expenses and other necessary expenses of the City of Twinsburg, Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2018.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Ordinance 60, 2018. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I made the motion, it was seconded by Ms. McFerrin. This is to allow for the estimated expenses related to payroll and operations for the banquet center and the restaurant through year-end, and to establish the department accounts for these expenses. The estimates are based on opening dates of August 1st for the banquet center and September 1st for the restaurant. Any other discussion? Can I get everything there, sir? Okay. All right. Shannon, please call the roll. Is this the second or is this the third?
It's the third.
This is the third, yeah. Okay. Shannon, please call the roll.
Ms. Stoffer?
Yes.
Ms. McFerrin?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Bellin?
Yes.
Ordinance 60, 2018 passes by a 7-0 vote. We are going to pass over Ordinance 61, 2018, to allow for some changes. Next, we have Ordinance 62, 2018.
An ordinance amending Chapter 531 of the Codified Ordances of the City of Twinsburg Regarding Cigarette and Tobacco Vendors.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Ordinance 62, 2018. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I made the motion, it was seconded by Mr. Bellin. This was brought to us by Mr. Bellin.
Yeah, this is the ordinance essentially that would raise the age of, to purchase tobacco in the City of Twinsburg to 21. So it would be cigarettes, cigars, smokeless tobacco, vaping products, you know, e-cigarettes and those kind of things. This is one that's very near and dear to my heart. As you may know, I founded an organization about 12 years ago now to help people quit chewing tobacco. So this is one that, there's a variety of reasons that I would be voting for this tonight.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Shannon, please call the roll.
Ms. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Bellin?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Ms. McFerrin?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Ms. McFerrin?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Ms. McFerrin?
No.
Mr. Bellin?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Ordinance 64, 2018.
An ordinance rezoning certain property located at 9101 Ravenna Road, Twinsburg, Ohio, from R2 residential use to C2 commercial use.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Ordinance 64, 2018. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I made the motion, it was seconded by Mr. Fury. This is a rezoning request to be placed on the ballot. It's kind of an awkwardly shaped piece of land on the corner of East Aurora Road in Ravenna. Planning Commission did recommend this. Any other discussion?
It's actually not the one right on the corner, it's the second one in.
Oh, yeah, the middle one.
I think that to emphasize the fact that it is something that's going to be placed on the ballot, so that the residents can all have their say and their vote.
Anything else? Shannon, please call the roll.
Ms. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
No.
Mr. Scafidi?
No.
Mr. Steele?
No.
Ms. McFerrin?
No.
Mr. Bellin?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Ordinance 64, 2018 passes by, did it pass or fail?
It failed.
Failed. Okay, I apologize. I checked out, 4-3 vote. Next, we have Ordinance 65, 2018.
An ordinance rezoning certain property located at 1816 East Aurora Road, Twinsburg, Ohio, from C2 commercial use to R5 residential use.
I made the motion, it was seconded by Mr. Fury. This is another rezoning request to be placed on the ballot. This is coming to us with neither a yes nor a no from vote from planning. This is the property at the corner of Chamberlain and East Aurora Road, near the Army Base there, across from Amazon. This property, the owner would like to have this rezoned residential. Any other discussion? Or any discussion?
This was originally industrial, I3, that was contiguous with the Army Reserve lot. It crosses the Horstone Industrial Park, and we put it on the ballot to be changed to C3 with a plan that that developer had, but our comprehensive plan in the last three iterations does not show anything with residential on that side. It really doesn't fit, in my opinion, the plan for the city, so I'll be voting no on
Any other discussion? Shannon, please call the roll.
Ms. Stoffer?
No.
Mr. Fury?
No.
Mr. Scafidi?
No.
Mr. Barr?
No.
Ms. McFerrin?
No.
Mr. Steele?
No.
Ordinance 65, 2018 fails by a 7-0 vote. Next, we have ordinance 67, 2018.
An ordinance approving the recodification, editing, and inclusion of certain ordinances as part of the various component codes of the Codified Ordinances of Twinsburg, Ohio.
Okay, that's, that was the second reading. Next, ordinance 68, 2018.
An ordinance adopting the tax budget of the City of Twinsburg, Ohio for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2019, and submitting the same to the county auditor.
That's also its second reading. Next, we have ordinance 73, 2018.
An ordinance amending Section 911 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Twinsburg to provide for the adjustment of charge for quarterly rates of the Twinsburg sanitary sewer system.
That's the first reading. Next, we have ordinance 74, 2018.
An ordinance requesting and authorizing the Summit County Board of Elections to place upon the City of Twinsburg ballot at the general election of November 6th, 2018, certain proposed amendments to Section 181.03 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Twinsburg in order to increase the income tax rate to 2 and 1/4 percent.
That is on its first reading. Next, we have ordinance 75, 2018.
An ordinance requesting and authorizing the Summit County Board of Elections to place upon the City of Twinsburg ballot at the general election of November 6th, 2018, certain proposed amendments to Article 3 of the Charter of the City of Twinsburg regarding the council.
It's the first reading. Next, we have ordinance 76, 2018.
An ordinance requesting and authorizing the Summit County Board of Elections to place upon the City of Twinsburg ballot at the general election of November 6th, 2018, certain proposed amendments to Article 4 of the Charter of the City of Twinsburg regarding the mayor.
That's the first reading. Ordinance 77, 2018.
An ordinance requesting and authorizing the Summit County Board of Elections to place upon the City of Twinsburg ballot at the general election of November 6th, 2018, certain proposed amendments to Section 6.02 of the Charter of the City of Twinsburg regarding salaries and bonds.
First reading. Next, we have ordinance 78, 2018.
An ordinance requesting and authorizing the Summit County Board of Elections to place upon the City of Twinsburg ballot at the general election of November 6th, 2018, certain proposed amendments to Article 7 of the Charter of the City of Twinsburg regarding administrative departments, commissions, and boards.
Next, we have ordinance 79, 2018.
An ordinance requesting and authorizing the Summit County Board of Elections to place upon the City of Twinsburg ballot at the general election of November 6th, 2018, certain proposed amendments to Article 8 of the Charter of the City of Twinsburg regarding nominations, elections, and qualifications.
First reading. Next, we have ordinance 80, 2018.
An ordinance requesting and authorizing the Summit County Board of Elections to place upon the City of Twinsburg ballot at the general election of November 6th, 2018, certain proposed amendments to Article 9 of the Charter of the City of Twinsburg regarding initiative, referendum, and recall.
First reading. Next, we have ordinance 81, 2018.
An ordinance amending the current year appropriations for the general revenue account as established in ordinance 101, 2017, the appropriation ordinance for the City of Twinsburg for the year 2018.
That's its first reading as well. Next, we'll move on to unfinished business, new business, and miscellaneous. Mr. Barr?
Just one thing this evening. Should be noted, the Twinsburg Historical Society is having a fundraiser this Saturday. They're doing a celebrity bartending event at Rush Hour Bar, I believe it begins about 6:30 in the evening. Several members of this historical society will be attending bar, and they'll be doing some activities there to raise funds for their organization.
What day is that? I'm sorry.
It's this Saturday, June 16th, at Rush Hour on Ravenna Road. And that is all I have this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Bellin?
Good evening, thank you. A couple of things this evening. Construction continues on the Joanne and Elila Place Improvement Project. We're shooting for late August completion of Elila and Joanne construction. Please drive slowly and carefully. Wanted to follow up on an issue that a resident, Mr. Thews, brought up at the last meeting. There were some concerns about Meadowwood residents. There was a Glenwood construction project that is backing up to Meadowwood, and there was some concern about the number of trees that were being cleared, and those kind of things. I reached out to the mayor of Glen Willow. I got the actual site plan, and there still is going to be some buffer in there. I asked him kind of specifically about that buffer, and I want to read some of, a bit of his email. He said, "Block B of 31 acres was created because of all the wetlands and to preserve and buffer to the east and south, so that nothing would be built on it. We are working on a nature, no asphalt trail to be included in Block B, but plans are not finalized yet. As the map shows, the 31 acres will remain undeveloped." In addition to that, and this is a separate email, "In addition to the 31 acres that will remain undeveloped, there will be a landscape plan approved for this project, as we do with all our commercial industrial buildings." So, if anyone wants to see that site plan, I'm happy to give it to them. I also put it on my website at gregbellintwinsburg.com. That's all I have for this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. McFerrin?
I have nothing.
Okay. I just wanted to thank the charter review committee for all their hard work.
Yeah.
And that's all I have. Mr. Scafidi?
I have nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Steele?
Greg, I did take a drive up into Glen Willow and drove back to where this site is, and at least at the moment, you can't see through the trees to any of our houses. Don't know how much further they're going to go, but.
I believe all of the clearing that's going to be done is done.
Okay. Then I think there's a reasonable buffer in the trees. It's unfortunate, the kids up there don't have anywhere to go play and run through the woods anymore, but, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Fury?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Okay, I actually do have one other item. I need to make a motion that the city council approves $3,500 to the Rotary Club of Twinsburg to provide the service of placing flags on McTerry and Parkway for the years of 2017 and '18 as part of the Parade of Flags. So, the city gets to buy a year, we get one-year free deal on the service. The city was due for payment last year, but was not invoiced, therefore, the payment will be for the years 2017 and '18.
I'll second.
Okay. I have a question.
Yes.
I thought they just took over the program this year, and so this is '18, how does '17 play in there?
Good question.
Good question.
No, I don't think I'm going to pass anything, it doesn't make any sense.
So, the service was that it was transferred from Parade of Flags, so he, the service was never collected last year, however, the service was provided, and there was expenses from that.
You're saying the Rotary did that?
There are two separate organizations. There's Parade of Flags, and then there's the Twinsburg Rotary Club. The Rotary Club just took over the program this year, however, the service was provided